We have just initiated the recording of the meeting. So, this it is now open to all. So, you just can switch on your video and audio, you can talk. And probably we will give two-three minutes and then we will start the session. Okay. I think they just want to listen to this stuff. Hi, hi Dinesh, hi Dinesh. Hello, how are you? Okay. You are the first meeting you are attending, Dinesh?
No, we are attending two meetings.
You are attending, okay, okay, okay.
This is face-to-face physical meeting.
Okay. You are coming to Chennai, okay. No problem. But Chennai was a good massive hit. It was 33, 34 people who attended. It's a good response. Good connection. A lot of people, they have exchanged the business, they built a relationship. All those things have happened. So, what is your plan? What's your plan for twenty-six? If a rural body is also going to come.
Fully MLAs, we want to cover for all the constitutions.
Yeah, yeah.
Like WhatsApp marketing and voice blasting. So, yes, but if there are more changes, we are actually.
Okay.
Even if like the numbers are changed for the information.
Ah, zero-one-four-zero plan.
Just one-four-zero, we can do outgoing call and DND, 100% there is no calls actually.
Oh.
The information, maybe soon they are going to announce that maybe within two or three weeks actually.
Okay, okay.
Even numbers, even not only the same industries cannot do anything actually. So, even like for normal outgoing calls, they are not able to do. So, if they are outgoing, they can reach the client, they share the numbers actually. Plus one-four-zero.
Okay, okay.
So, if they are in DND, they can do calls. If not, we are going to carry the mobile virtual number. So, normal SIM card, mobile number in digital.
Okay.
And they can buy through their K O Z. If we normally purchase by SIM card, same way they can buy this virtual numbers.
Oh, okay, okay.
The same features, we are in. This is the discussion.
Okay. Actually, we are planning to integrate as a S T K, right? So, that S T K, we are building our app. Currently, how we are doing is we are just sending in your platform. On the Yar Vender, we are sending the blasting, the voice or SMS or voice. Now, I am planning to bring it into the app itself. So, how do you give some license key?
We need to access our account, sir, actually.
So, how do you do it? If the client reaches, they have to come to your portal and reach. Purchase the credit.
We are actually in your account. That is why we are super admin. We are not in a company name.
Okay.
So, you can integrate any application. We will do it.
So, it will be like a reseller account, right? I resell to multiple candidates. But our documentation is there, yeah? That is how you do it. That is how you take care of it. The documentation is on board.
Who is the K O Z? The K O Z, we have verified it and it is on board.
On board, okay, okay.
It is a nice system.
Okay, okay. Fine, great.
So, we are starting with WhatsApp. Marketing WhatsApps actually. Previously, we started with the button WhatsApp. We have stopped using one-deep line WhatsApp.
Officially?
Officially, we are doing individual members challenges. Now, we are doing a party.
Doing it.
We are going to get our GST. Because everyone needs GST. So, GST proper.
Last election, we have got a letter from the party head for the candidate. Then, you can create a being. You can buy the center ID.
We will do a marketing report. We will do that actually. We will do SMS.
SMS.
WhatsApp chat box, we cannot do that. So, WhatsApp chat box, again, they are kind of a business.
Okay, okay, okay.
So, we need GST. Because they are broadcasting, charges are on GST. Multiple billing.
Okay.
That is why I am asking.
Good info. So, let's enter into the session and good evening all. Hello. Okay, good evening all. Thanks for joining this session and I am Terel Anandan, taking care of the secretary position, a national secretary position in Forum of Digital Politics. So, welcome all and we keep the discussion in English so that everybody can understand across the globe. People would have joined from various parts of India as well as from outside India. And this is our second virtual town hall meeting. In the last meeting, we have planned that every month we will have a virtual town hall meeting. And this is our second meeting and every first Wednesday of the month, we will reserve for this virtual town hall meeting is what we have taken understanding in last call. And basically, in this virtual town hall, we will be covering a three space, which is a combination of election tech, basically for the technology or the tools which is required for the candidate to contest in an election. And a civic tech is basically the elected representative like MLA, MP or the local bodies would be requiring a technology support for their branding and for maintaining the constituency. And third one is the GAO tech, basically the government, whoever create the government. Like it can be like a technology which can promote the schemes of the government or any support, it can be agreements management from the government for the government can be there. So, all this put together is what we call it as politech or political tech landscape. Right? So, politech landscape is a broader version of this industry and further we break down into election tech, civic tech and GAO tech. So, we will discuss about that in subsequent slide. Also, we will cover some of the live status like what has happened in Sri Lanka election, how the digital politics played a role and what is happening currently in Ariana election. All those stuff we will discuss in the subsequent slide. And this is chapter two, which is basically I told you the second month of the virtual meeting. Okay. So, maybe you can take screenshot of the screen which we are currently showing along with the participant list. So, where you can probably post in your social media like LinkedIn, Facebook, Instagram by tagging Forum of Digital Politics that you are attending the virtual town hall meeting currently. Maybe you can post it later also. Okay. Now, I will start with this slide, right? So, I have, I have just mentioned some four plus three, seven people here. So, there is one common factors in all these people, the common thing in all these seven people. I just want to mention like Elon Musk, you might be knowing about him the first day. I think somebody is unmuted. Mukajib, please take care of it. You can mute the guys who are not speaking. And the Elon Musk has introduced Tesla car, right? Which is an electric car. So, just take it as that. And Diruboy Ambani, the common thing across this all seven people is the business guys. But apart from the business, one thing, I just want to repeat it. One important thing like Diruboy Ambani has started, made a revolution in the clothing industry like the Wimal brand, right? So, Elon Musk had made revolution in electric car. And Dr. Velumani, you might be knowing that he has made a revolution in thyroid care, right? And C K R is basically on this shashet, the chick shampoo is what basically he had made a revolution in that shampoo industry. And Seva Shankaran is from Marcel, who was made a telecom industry. And Gopinath Sir is from the Air Deccan, who created an industry of airplane or travel for all is what he has made. And the last one is the guy who was Ashat Mehta, who has just flourished in terms of share market. Though the negative stuff, we will just keep aside, but just seeing the positive side. These all seven people have created a revolution in their respective industry. But the one common thing, if you observe on all these seven people, they are not that from particular industry. Like if you ask Elon Musk, he is not from the automobile industry at all, but he has created a dielectric car vehicle. And Diruboy Ambani is not from textile industry, but he has created a revolution in textile. Dr. Velumani, in every meeting, he used to say he don't know where the thyroid is itself in the body. But he has created a revolution in thyroid care industry, thyroid industry. And similarly, if you see everybody, even the Adakan owner Gopinath is not from aircraft industry. Though he is the captain from defense, but he is not from aircraft industry, right? Means not from this air industry. But he is, so the common thing from these people or not, they are not from the particular industry, right? So, the point here, what I want to mention is the guys from the particular industry will just think in terms of improving their features. But the people who is outside the industry or will see the industry as a third eye and they create a revolution into it. So, similarly, we are the people in the political tech industry. Though even, even the Prashant Kishore has been initiated the whole political industry ground, but he is not at all from the political tech. He is just a data scientist in, who was just done. And he has opened this political industry altogether, but not the tech industry, but he has opened the political industry as of, as to all. But there is still the scope for political technology in the political industry where somebody from the outsider has to really need to come into and create a revolution. That is how it happens. So, even a particular political party in the field cannot even think about the thing because the third eye or third angle needs to be required, is required to bring a revolution into the. This is what I just want to insist on this with the eight, seven people who has created a revolution in their respective industry without being pioneer in that industry, right? So, that is where we are also a forum of digital politics people, the members in the forum of digital politics, no need any experience in politics also. But if you have an urge or if you have a passion to create something big in the political industry, you can see something in a different eye and you guys can really make a revolution in this industry. That is what I just want to insist from this slide. And now, let's enter into the next slide where we will talk about the problem in politics where the disengagement, the people, many people lack of confidence and they don't enter into the politics because of the dominance or because of the money and the power which the other guys have, right? And there is high campaign cost in the market, like people have to spend more money to campaign it. So, that itself a high campaign. These are the people which, these are the problems which is currently the political industry is facing where they don't have, they are fearing or they have hesitated to come into the political or to the election stuff. So, lack of awareness, they don't know the process out of it and limited access. They don't have much resources access into it and corruption in the market which is basically taking over the candidate fear to enter into election and inequality into the system. The established party or the registered or unregistered party will have some sort of resource access and the independent will not have, independent will have some resource access. So, these are the problems we are facing into the industry currently. And we see this as a need of the hour as a digital politics. As digital politics is a weapon where which brings a politics for all and election for all into the system. Basically, anybody and everybody whoever interested into or enter, want to enter into the politics or want to enter into election, this digital politics can be a digital weapon for each and everybody to enter into politics. And this is our main purpose of this Forum of Digital Politics too. So, before entering into the session, I just want to give a brief about the Forum of Digital Politics. Where, what is Forum of Digital Politics? Forum of Digital Politics, nothing but a section eight nonprofit organizations where we have been, we have a compliance and the standardization in attaining our vision and mission, the long-term vision as well as the short-term missions which we have. And the core focus of Forum of Digital Politics is basically to promote and integrate the technology into the political process. Either it can be election or it can be civic body or it can be a government body. That is why I told you election tech, civic tech and the GAO tech system. And it's a dynamic platform where we have, it's a platform for political consultants, mentors, advisors, policymakers, startups, students, aspiring politicians as well as the women leaders and the serving politicians. And we build a strong community where we have a same shared interest and we get a support from peers for our business. So, this is purely a business forum but a non-profitable organization. Just like Confederation of Indian Industry or you name any, any association. So, this is an association where we work towards the technology and the implementation into the process, into the political process. So, that is where Forum of Digital Politics will be created, is been created. And we are just a one-year-old organization. And currently, we are conducting and we are building a team across India as well as globe. And I am personally visiting each and every main cities in Tamil Nadu and through mini conclave and meeting various like-minded people. So, bringing into them forum, so we have officially or still we are able to identify multiple forum leaders across states and across districts and across all states of India as well as the globe. So, we have an internal plan where we will be bringing and launching an official, officially the Forum of Digital Politics with all leaders onboarded by January twenty-five. So, this is what we have taken an internal target of four months and we are working towards that. And the first virtual town hall meeting we have conducted in last month as of thirty-first August, where it's just the first meeting we have done. And subsequently, we have planned every first Wednesday of the, first Wednesday of every month, we will have this digital virtual town hall meeting for digital politics. And this is our informal meeting recently we have done in Madurai with over fifteen-plus people. Just last week we have done, where as I told, I personally visit each and every cities and meeting people. And this is where we had a lunch session with Velur. Though it is not officially announced, we have just had a lunch with a Velur team, Velur zone team in Tamil Nadu. And this is the Chennai Conclave, where we have done two weeks before with almost thirty-plus people, where we have exchanged multiple business interest into it and where we had a relations building and with a motive of basically to have a business tires. And we have another program called Digital Politics with Terel Anandan. Basically, this is a bi-weekly online webinar series. And we have done two meetings as such as of now like with artificial intelligence and how do we reach the voters with personally? So, these are the two events we have done. And in the next week, we have basically on the twelfth October, Saturday. This is basically on the every Saturday, second Saturday and fourth Saturday. Every month, we are planning this as a second Saturday and fourth Saturday, seven PM. It's an online event, webinar event, where every week we will invite some chief guest related to political tech and as well as the election tech or GAO tech, where we will get some knowledge from them. So, next week, we have a meeting with Chandrasekhar Kupiri. He is from Peaceful Progress Venture Capitalist as well as Anova Carpet Service. So, he has, he will be taking a session on how to get funding for startup. So, it's just a talk show between me and the guest where we will discuss various topic which is related to politics as well as the political tech industry. So, this is where we run this program also. So, we have, if you see on, we will have informal mini conclave at multiple cities. And we also have online webinar series on second and fourth Saturday. So, this is the two programs we are running currently. And these are some of the earlier program which we have done. This is the J N A in politics, digital politics, we have done on twenty-seventh April, twenty-twenty-four, just after the election has happened, parliament election in Tamil Nadu. And these are some of the mega conclave. So, we have mini conclave and we plan mega conclave. Mini conclave is basically an informal conclave with, let's say, some twenty-five to thirty people or less than that two. So, it's just, we will have a personal touch and interaction with one-to-one. And we have mega conclave where we bring more people, almost let's say two-hundred, two-three-hundred people into a single platform and we exchange and we bring more candidates from the political parties and the more industry specialists who are into tech platforms and the advisors, mentors, all those people will be into a single forum and single platforms where we do conclave, mega conclave in various cities. And this is one which we have done in Madurai, just before Lok Sabha election. And this is another mega conclave we have done in Salem. This is also just before Lok Sabha election. And this is the third one which we have done in Ozzur. Ozzur is a place which is a border to Tamil Nadu, Karnataka, Andhra to cover these three places. Basically, these three conclaves have been targeted for Lok Sabha election in order to create an awareness to the people and invite more people to join the election and try out the election with the help of technology. So, this is one of the initiatives we have taken. And these are the informal meetings we are planning in the upcoming days. Like we have done Chennai and Madurai and Thirunel Valley, we have planned on seventh, next, the coming Monday, four PM, we have planned on Thirunel Valley. So, if anybody from your network or if your team, if you are, anybody contacted, if anybody in your network is staying in Thirunel Valley zone, like Thirunel Valley, Thutukudi, Kanyakumari, Tenkasi, even Virudhanagar, across some, let's say, one-fifty kilometer radius, you can invite them to this meeting and we will have a mini conclave out of there. And we also have a pipeline of Velur, Salem, Coimbatore, Tiruchy, Kadhalur. These are the eight zones we have in Forum of Digital Politics where we will be covering all the informal conclave, mini conclave in these eight zones in Tamil Nadu. And out of, other than Tamil Nadu, we have a plan in Bangalore, Pune, Mumbai, Delhi and Hyderabad in the upcoming days, upcoming months. So, these are the plans which we plan for mini conclave. So, if you see, we have three programs currently running. One is the mini conclave, the physical meet with a small group, selected group. And the second one is digital politics with Terel Anandan for the bi-weekly online webinar. And the third one would be a mega conclave which will happen just before any election in a particular state at that area. So, this is where we do this three set of programs. Okay. Now, coming to the Sri Lanka election, right? So, this we have already shared in the group, in the community channel where I just want to mention you or just want to share that the digital politics is not just running ads in Meta or in Google or in any other platform, right? So, it is more than that. So, if you see, Ranil Vikramasinghe is a presidential candidate who spent the highest in the Meta ads. So, he has spent almost one lakh USD dollar and in the stuff, right? So, but if you see the vote which he has got is in the third place, right? So, Anurag Kumar, he has never been in the picture of winning, but the communist and they, even the communist, if you see the left wing, they don't spend much on the, the election itself. The communist or the left, leftists don't spend much on the election. But they take it to their manifestos and to the people. So, this is where the complete changes happen. So, we don't want to enter into much what digital politics strategies which they have taken. But the point here in this slide, just want to clarify that running ads in the digital platform is not the digital politics. So, there are more tools, there are more technologies required and there are more strategy needs to be defined than just running ads in the Facebook, Instagram and in the Google. So, this is where if you see, there's a real example where even though if you spend more on Meta or in any Google platform, it's not that going to, it's not the only reason which you are going to win. Though the anti-incumbency, other stuff plays a very important role for Ranil or for the Rajpakshya team. But there are more to do in Sri Lanka in terms of, not only in Sri Lanka for an election in terms of digital politics. So, you should know about the technologies available in the market, the tools which is available in the market. There are, there are social listening tool in the market, there are election management tools in the market and there are media monitoring tool in the market, what you, what people discuss about the particular candidate or particular party. So, those are also there. So, it's all the combinations where we bring all the stuff into a single platform and it is an input or it's an analytical tool for the strategies. So, about a strategy, strategy cannot be defined just by, on their own, right? They need to be have some data points to defend the strategy. So, there are tools in the markets and that is where Forum of Digital Politics is in place to bring all those tools and create awareness to the people, to the public, means not to the public, basically to the candidate or to the political consultants or to the strategies so that they can build winning strategy with the help of these tools and technologies which is available. So, this is just a platform, Forum of Digital Politics is a platform where we bring those awareness and we promote those digital literacy in the political tech ecosystem. So, this is where the Sri Lanka election, I just want to give an overview about it. Okay. Now, entering into Ariana election. So, we were into this Ariana election for last three months. And see, there is two things we observed in this Ariana. One is, you might be knowing a story of the chappal industry, means the footwear industry. So, the guy from the footwear company from the other, some, some country came into the India and sees that nobody is wearing the footwear or the chappal in India. So, there is no opportunity for us to sell our product in India. So, this is a one statement given by one marketing guy to the company. The other guy who came to India and sees that nobody is wearing the chappal in India and we see a good opportunity in India to our product. So, these are the two different statement. So, both of them seen that as an, one guy has seen as an opportunity and one guy is seen as, there is no opportunity, right? So, like here, even in Ariana, we have seen two possibilities like those guys, Ariana state altogether is still there depending on the traditional kind of marketing, a traditional campaign. So, they go to each and every house, they don't use much tools this time. I am not sure why they have not used, whether they are not aware of it, the, the lack of awareness or they don't want to go for it or they are pretty sure that the each, that knowledge or the people, they don't need the technology. But here, we see an opportunity here, right? So, since there is nobody using, not nobody, maybe I call it as maximum people have not used the technology. So, other tools also not used much. So, still they are depending on the manual operation and manual stuff. So, this is happened in Ariana where the fifth October is what the election polling date is. And we see this as an opportunity maybe in the next election. So, this election, we have tried, we have tried to push our product into multiple places, but we have got limited success into it as from the forum as well. So, forum, we had almost ten forum leaders from that place and we have given an awareness. Maybe in the next election, we would see that as an opportunity for growth there in Ariana. So, this is what on the on-ground we have seen. But other states like if you choose Tamil Nadu, the southern states are mostly tech-enabled states and even Maharashtra, Gujarat, all those are tech-enabled state. But the eastern state or the central part of India, even the northern Delhi, Ariana, Punjab, those guys are little lack in technology when compared to southern states. So, we see this as an opportunity from the subsequent elections. So, even in the Delhi election is due in Jan, February of next month, next year. So, maybe we see this as an opportunity even in Delhi. Delhi is the headquarters of India, but still Delhi is behind in terms of usage of technology. So, there are seventy assembly constituents in Delhi. And even if you take three major party, Ahmadmi, BJP and Congress, so there are almost two-hundred-and-ten candidate who is going to contest in this next election in seventy constituency. So, there is a potential of almost two-hundred candidates in Delhi. And out of which, let's say, thirty-five percent of people are already aware of the technology to be used and the tools which is available in the market. And we still have a potential of sixty-five percent. So, this is a growing industry altogether. Political tech industry is just a infant stage now and it's a responsibility of Forum of Digital Politics to bring awareness to the candidate and to, to make people to use the technology. So, this is where we see this as an opportunity. Okay. What are the investments opportunity which can be seen in the, the political tech, right? So, if you see, this is the slide which I am showing you. You can see the slide, right? I think disconnected. Mukarji? Is the screen is visible, right?
It's visible, sir.
Okay, sorry. Actually, I thought my connection has.
No, no, it's visible.
Right, fine. Thank you. So if you see this slide, these are the companies which is currently operating in political tech industry in U S. In every uh uh sector, there is a company. Uh let me, let me maybe zoom it. If you see, there's a voter engagement. So these are the companies who works in voter engagement. These are the technology which is available in voter engagement. And volunteer and activist mobilization. So these are the techno companies which is working in activists. Means the mobilization of volunteers, voter contact, how to contact voters and there are some field tools. If you see field tools. Mobile canvassing, mobile canvassing stool, grassroots action, dialer tools, peer-to-peer texting. And if you see broadcast messaging, events, mapping, so there are N number of uh uh uh. Startup companies available in the U S and they are operating in political tech industry. And if you see the terms of investments, even uh. Uh the investors needs to look into uh different perspective of uh political tech industry. As well as and sees this as an opportunity. See, as I say in mini conclave, as I say in mini mini conclave, saying that. Political tech industry is the only industry which is resuscitation free. Even during Corona uh uh pandemic, we have conducted this election and it is unavoidable. So. If you take any industry that can be shut down during pandemic, either other than healthcare and uh the grocery industry or the vegetable industry. If it is other than those things, uh this one, this political tech or election tech industry, uh most particularly on the election tech. Even and even in pandemic, the election happens and the people spend money on that, right? So this is where it is, and these are the opportunities lies for the investors to look into it. So that is where we are bringing more investors, the venture capitalists, the angel investors. And the H N I's, the high net worth investment individuals into the uh forum of digital politics panel. So that if anybody from your side, if anybody in uh come up, comes up with startup ideas. And where the forum of digital politics can help you in validating it, in venturing it and in making a strategy out of it. And if required, we can help them to get funding from the investors. So that is the other sessions which we have planned in next week. Where the questions will be most related on the investment in general uh uh industry as well as some questions will be related to. Political tech industry. So this is where we have planned and we are onboarding almost uh multiple venture capital capitalist into the forum. So this is an opportunity available. So you think in terms of, if you are already working in a political tech industry with a. Uh people uh for the candidate, you are already working for twenty six or for the rural body, for the Panjat election or for the. Uh twenty twenty six M L A election. Think in terms of this idea, bring more ideas into it. Try to venture it and we have a ventureist also into the panel where those ideas, your ideas can be. Uh converted into a business model. See, there is one say always like, all ideas are not uh uh. Uh this are not, will not create a business model. And all business model will not create a revenue model. So this is the statement uh said by our uh uh great. Ventureist on boarded, Mister J K Muthu from Madurai. So he used to say every time, like you might have any many ideas, but ideas. All ideas are not business model, will not convert into business model. And all business model will not convert into revenue model. Even you might have a good business model, but that business model has to be also be create a revenue, right? There are many businesses which do not create revenue also. These are the a statement which uh J K Muthu sir used to say at every time in many places. So I just want to quote that also into this meeting. That so if you have any idea, come to us, we have a team. Where we can validate that ideas and thinking that whether it is can be converted into business model. And if you already have a business model, we can validate and saying that whether it can be possible to create a revenue model. So these are the opportunities which we have in the panel. Not only ventureist, we have a strategist on the planet where we can help you to. Uh strategize your businesses and we have a P R on the panel where we can do a branding and a public relationship. Uh on bringing your, creating awareness of your stuff. And we have a legal team on board at where any legal issues in your. Startups or in dealing with a client, we can, we have a team to support that. And we have um. Cybersecurity team on boarded. Any any cybersecurity services for you as well as for the candidates required can be taken. So it's a pool of resources and pool of uh people from various knowledges are being brought together into this forum. So it can be a people from startup industry or there are the people from uh investment industry. And there are people from political industry. Even I T wing of many political party are also part of this uh forum. So this is where we are building a bigger forum or bigger platform uh for everybody to have a. A shared interest into the uh making business as well as to serve the uh candidate or the political uh areas, right? So this is where we bring into this place. And if you see the overall market size, so uh overall there is a twenty lakh position of elected position in the market in India alone. And this election is not only political. So there are some non-political elections also happens in India. If you say. There are almost five lakh plus associations in India, which they conduct democratically, they conduct an election for president, vice president, treasurer and secretary. Like let's say uh uh even the the Bollywood the the product, production industry or the Bollywood actor industry. And the Collywood industry and the Indian Medical Association, Bar Council of Advocates industry. And there are communities and the residential association, industrial association. These are the places where the opportunity lies for election tech industry altogether. Even civic tech, those guys are also. Uh for the, in civic, we will manage constituency management, right? For them, it is again, they need to re. Uh position or um brand their uh uh position into internally. So there also in non-political also. We have an opportunity for civic tech applications. So overall, the size of the market is two lakh crore in India. So uh this is just a political uh industry, just uh just estimated the market size. But if you come across non-political and if you go above, after India, there are multiple countries, democratic country also having a election like Sri Lanka. Mauritius, U S, German, Uni, Uni, European Union and other places. So these are the player, now if you combine altogether the market size, you think about the uh the market's value of all this. Uh India is the biggest democratic, then comes U S, then come uh all other countries. So you see this as a political uh uh election or political tech market size and there are non-political tech market size. Uh now so uh you think about the value, so it will be just two crore, I just added with the twenty lakh position. And it should be almost more than a twenty lakh crore is what I just put the number, maybe it's not a validated number. Just throwing some random numbers as twenty lakh crore is a market potential of overall uh globe for this political tech industry. And the most important thing is it is growing at more than twenty percent plus C A G R. So this is the overall potential lies in the uh political tech industry and uh. As I always end with a slide saying that people always say no more politics and I used to say that. Don't say no more politics, say it's no more politics and no more digital politics is what. Where even a pawn can become a king with the help of digital politics is what we used to. In digital politics always. And with this, I just want to end the slide and end the discussion as well. And I'm open to questions if anybody have any questions. Like uh uh if somebody have not joined the uh WhatsApp community, you can take uh the screenshot of this. And there's a Q R code, you can scan the QR code or you can share this QR code to the people of your network with a political uh. Interest and they can be a part of forum of digital politics community. And by scanning this QR code, you will be, have an access to a WhatsApp community of forum. So this is where I just want to end the meeting now and I'm open to questions. So if anybody have any questions, do let me know. If anybody want to introduce yourself to the team, you guys can introduce and maybe you can say what is your company into it. Or if you have done any uh services or if you have any product, any technology, you are free to open. You can unmute. Uh and you can switch on your video and you can talk. Or if you have anything to put it in chat also, I am open to take questions. You can type in chat so I can take questions over there as well. So we'll just give you two, three. Maybe I'll give you some ten fifteen seconds. So if we have any questions, we will continue. Otherwise, we can close the session.
Their own doubt actually. So this is Dinesh actually from. Uh maybe I think this is a right question a lot, but we just want the proper database of our citizens. Since we we are into digital forum, but uh for example, if I take a Chennai in Chatti Nagar, I want more about the. Electoral voter list. So where we can promote them through digital forum?
Voter list is already available in the election commission website for each and every. Uh both wise voter list data is already there in election commission website. So probably you can use that and you can download that and everybody knows about this. So even candidate are using the same.
With the mobile number can we get?
No, no. So that is legally not allowed. Uh a mobile number is not legally allowed and. Only the voter database, that too it is available in election commission website for uh verifying the voters uh. Data for their individuals. Uh that is what the purpose of keeping in uh uh election commission, that's it. And as I said, the mobile number, it's not available anywhere and it is up to candidate to collect their mobile number. And also the consent of sending the S M S or WhatsApp or any communication to them. So without the consent, you cannot send any message to anybody in India and that might comes under the legal issues also.
This is the which we are challenging, getting more challenge in this side actually.
So that is not legal, no? So if that is there, then everybody can send message to everybody, right? So uh that's not allowed, but you have to get a concern from the particular voters. Like if you see, uh you can even you you to use the walls of the house of a voter. You have to get a permission from the house owner saying that I will put a wall poster over there. So that is the concern. So if you or even for the. House uh wall, if you are getting a permission and in this digital world, everybody has a privacy policy. And uh we cannot uh send any message to anybody randomly like that. So we should have a consent from the voters before sending anything and everything. Right. So if you have anybody on chat, you just drop it. Otherwise, we will close the session. And just I will want to give you some five minutes, five seconds of time. So uh just, any questions? Fine. Uh thank you. Thanks for joining the session. Thank you all. And it was a wonderful session on the second virtual town hall meeting and let's catch up on the next session. And please do join for the next week session with Chandrasekhar Kupperi on the how to get funding for startups. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.